Do you get to see the second segment of the podcast?
Well, I could have seen it. I chose not to watch it, but I know people have watched it because we got it. I thought it was good.
Yeah, we came off, I can see you're late.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
So last night at the concert, somebody brought up that we had sales out of the concert, so he immediately pulled out the watch. I could hear it. I was like, don't go in front of me, someone has walked away.
I saw the preview and what we actually here was like, we had some graphics and hence the usual whatever.
Good, good morning and thank you for coming out this Saturday morning for our budget workshop. This is the budget for 2026 that we have worked on. A few comments to open up with. This budget is balanced. We'll be presenting a couple of items that are increased. Basically, I went to each department knowing the effects of Senate Bill one, what it was going to have, and asked each department to basically stay in the 2025 budget for 2026. This is just a situation where we're not going to be getting funds like we have in the past, so we need to keep, in order to have a balanced budget, stay within the parameters of what was basically we had in '25. As the council looks through the summary, there's a couple of departments. Most departments either stayed the same or had a decrease. The ones that had an increase in the percentage of the budget, fire and police had an increase, but a large portion of that was due to what has been mandated by the state to increase the pension. This is something that they don't have any control over, we don't have control over either. So that was the reason both fire and police went up. You look, there's a category, all city. That has gone up because we're anticipating the increase from Duke Energy. Ben, did you say that's a 10%? 10% increase from Duke Energy. City court shows that it's gone up 29.34%. This is a situation where Judge Peton had wanted the court to stand on its own. So you had voted to make it an enterprise. Now that Judge Peton has retired, the new judge, in conversation with Councilman Deckard number two, decided to put that back on the tax roll. So we are going to show that on the tax roll and that's why it's a large increase. But their budget's $195,000, which is in line with what we've told all the other departments to stay within what they've had in the past. Employees will get a dollar an hour raise. And then there will be no increase for the elected officials or the senior staff, which is basically counsel, Mr. Meredith, myself, Mr. Porter, Mr. Dunn, and Mr. Oaks. There'll be no pay increases for them. So Ben, is there anything from your department you want to add to this?
No, it's a very flat budget. You can see your overall difference from this year to next year is, you know, whopping $76,000. So it's a very flat budget. So you can also see your debt, you know, compared, your debt payments this year to the proposed for next year goes down 41%. So quite the reduction on that side.
Is this the time to ask questions now?
And that's, yes.
Okay. I was just wondering, just Ben, the building utilities going up from $20,000 to $62,500, that is because of?
That's because of the building that we're moving into. The short term lease has to cover the lease utilities, all expenses in there.
And then the increase from, let's see, seminars, travel?
So all clerk treasurers and their chief staff, so their deputy clerk treasurers, are now required to attend different sessions and education. So we have to, I think it's 15 credit hours per year.
I'm sorry?
It's 15 credit hours per year that we are required to go to now. I'm hoping we don't have to use all that, but not all of them are virtual. Virtual ones are obviously a lot cheaper, but.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Can I ask about the court real quick? What did you say about the court again, why the city court, why it's gone up so much?
Because last year in the '25 budget, it was not on the tax roll. They were standalone. Now in '26, they've decided it's going to go back on the tax roll. And that is Judge Terrell and Councilman Deckard the second.
That's all the questions I have right now.
Okay. Well, these are available to every one Monday, so we're not going to go through your department by department. We're just going to answer whatever questions that you have.
Oh, okay.
So again, you know, we're stressing that this is a difficult time for not only the city of Martinsville, but all municipalities. I ran into a friend of mine that's on the town council for Mooresville last night, and they have no idea what they're going to get or anything right now. They know that they're not going to get increases like they have in the past, so they're starting to. So this year, each department's able to stay in and their amount, what they have for '25 for '26, but next year is going to be a little more difficult in being able to do that. And this is all, again, nothing that any one of us had anything to do with. It's just what's been handed down from the state. And as you're looking through, you know, if you've got a question. Mr. Meredith, you wanted to explain our process in a little bit of time. Have you thought about when we're going to present all of this?
Yes, let me pull up my give the dates. So right now, we are planning on, well, we're committed to at this point. So our first public meeting for the 2026 budget will be on September the 22nd, and then the adoption meeting will be on October the 14th.
And then when will you be submitting that into the state?
Say those dates again, I'm sorry.
The public meeting or in the first reading will be September 22nd, and then the second meeting in anticipation of the adoption will be October 14th. And then if approved on the 14th, I'll be submitting it to Gateway 15th or 16th. And I am meeting with our DLGF representative in July, just to kind of go over everything. We've already had our pre-meeting. They're, they're fine with everything that we have on here, so it's, no concerns on the other end, but.
Is this the time to be, are you going through stuff right now? Is this the time to ask?
You know, we're not going to go through page by page. It's, we're here to answer your questions that you may have.
I'd like to know why the park has an increase of, you know, 1.77%.
Park should be going down.
Down? Maybe look at the bottom.
Yeah, park's going down 0.56%. Are you looking at the park bond?
Is there a page?
My spreadsheet's.
I'm looking at page nine.
Now, there is a park bond page. That, that payment does go up, that's just the payment schedule.
Page 26.
Yeah, the park bond payment does go up 1.77%. I think that's the page you were looking at.
Yeah, that's the page I was looking at.
Yeah, that's just.
And why is that?
And we, so we typically pay our bonds off a little early. So that's to pay it off in 2026, even though it technically doesn't pay off until January 15th to 27th.
So that increase is because of not paying it off early?
No, the increase is so we can pay it off early. Otherwise, you'd have to put it on your 27th budget. So I try to pay them off early so it doesn't roll over.
Gotcha, okay, gotcha.
It saves us money doing it that way.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for explaining that, I couldn't understand. With the park on that page, 26, can I ask about the repairs going from $6,000 to $20,000?
Ashley, I don't know if you want to do that one, or if you want me to?
You can if you want to. We have some stuff. I mean, we have a lot of stuff coming up, a lot of things that will need to be replaced.
I'm sorry?
You can, Ben, if you.
So they have a lot of equipment that's coming to the age that's just going to need repairs. So we're seeing their trend going up. So we're anticipating that next year, they're going to have a pretty substantial increase in repairs. So, and that could be anything from shelter houses, equipment, pumps, plumbing.
Okay, gotcha.
Plumbing is probably a curse word to Ashley right now. Plumbing is probably a curse word to Ashley right now with the pool.
Oh, plumbing the pool, yeah.
Yeah, just, just the age of the building and the facilities. It's just, it's to that magical age where things are breaking, so.
Yeah, yeah.
How old is the pool? I think I've asked you that before and you just haven't.
It's 29 years since they redid last.
It's 29 years old now?
Wow.
So.
Yeah, it's always been.
So Mayor Dick, was that under your?
I'm sorry?
Phil, was that under you when they redid the park pool?
Yes. We inherited some problems.
Yeah.
Had it been mismanaged.
See, the bad thing was, or good thing when you redid it, the students were still getting out first part of May and not going back until September. Now, the school's out, what, maybe two months at the most?
When is the pool going to close this year?
August 3rd.
August 3rd for good, like you're not going to be open weekends until Labor Day?
No, we'll keep the splash pad open, but the pool closes.
I'm sorry?
We'll keep the splash pad open until Labor Day, but the pool will close on August 3rd.
Is it anything possible the splash pad could open a little earlier than in the day, possibly? I mean, it's so hot, you know, and there's people in the park and.
We currently will open it when our pool opens at 11:00. Just to keep consistent hours when the pool closes, we can possibly open it a little bit earlier, but we will not do that until the pool closes.
Mayor, question, how much do you pay Mike Dillinger's organization for economic development?
The Morgan and Economic Development's paid $60,000 a year.
I really beg to really differ as far as what he really does for the city. Maybe you can enlighten me on that, but I just don't think his $60,000 is doing anything for the city.
Okay.
I really don't.
Well, I, you know, you, Councilman Manz, you're represented to their board, so if you're concerned about what we're paying them, then maybe you have a conversation with him. Because their contract will be renewed every year, so it's a renewable contract. So, you know, that may be a discussion you want to have, maybe in September, October. You know, I know right now they are acting, trying to find a buyer for the Four Bear Feet facility.
Where'd they go?
I have no.
They just left?
I have no idea.
So they're not there anymore?
Again, I have no idea.
Oh. Okay, so Mike is working, Mike's working on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's going through the EDC. But again, if, if we, in our budget, we put $60,000 toward that. If we decide, you know what, we still want to maintain partnership with them, so maybe we, you know, for next year, we let them know, we're only going to give you 30. But that gives us 30,000 to do some things that we might want to do separately with another company. But I think it's important that we keep the 60,000 in the budget for.
I have to echo my feelings with Ann. I think you probably know I've been dissatisfied with his services for several years now. It seems like he does not accomplish much for Martinsville or anything. It's all Mooresville area. It's always been that way from day one. I was responsible for bringing Four Bear Feet to Martinsville along with some other businesses that they wanted to take credit for, and they have. And I just, I don't think we're getting our money's worth.
So maybe we leave that in the budget, but we divert it some other way? Either looking at somebody part-time just for the city itself?
Yeah, I just don't think he's the cheerleader that he should be.
And again, what do we wind up with as far as salary increases for employees?
A dollar. Dollar an hour.
Across the.
We got away from the percentage. Mr. Meredith actually had the idea that, you know, the work year is planned on 2,080 hours, except for fire and police, but you're under Matrix anyway. But all of our other employees, you know, that's, that's a 40-hour work week. So if we give them a dollar an hour, then we have a, everybody's getting equal increase. If you give a percentage, some people get a little more than someone else because their hourly rate may be a lot higher. So we thought we'd just try to make it a little more fair this year, and it was easier to calculate.
Mac, how is the street department able to go down negative 49%? How did that happen?
We have one employee that's retiring. He's actually at the water department, but to the street department. We have two that we've given the opportunity to seek employment elsewhere, and we're not replacing them. So we're down, we have 13 in the street, we have five in sanitation, we're fully staffed.
And four where? I'm sorry?
We have 13 at street, we have five in sanitation, we're fully staffed. I had called Ben's office earlier and talked to Ben. The money we have that we make available for, not for proper organizations, I have a deep feeling for our senior center, and the fact is for the city of Martinsville, for all those age 55 and older, and they have no means of income. So they have to raise funds to take care of their building, do the various projects. We've always made them part of the monies that we divide to those places. I talked to Ben about, of the total 30,000, I'd like to see us take 15,000 to 18,000 of that and make it a line item, if that were possible, that we could count on having to give to the senior center, who provide meals for our residents during the week, for those who are in need of food, and do so many other things. I don't know how you would feel about that as a council members. We propose that. This item, we have a line item to include, better than we could depend on yearly. And then that still is, is a good sum. We donated the other monies to Martinsville Baseball Softball League, Junior Football, Biddy Basketball Program.
I think you did the crime watch. I think crime watch was also one of them.
Crime watch neighborhood. We try to run it up a little each year. It's been very well accepted by the residents and appreciative by those who receive funds. And I would like to see our city have this commitment on a regular basis to the senior center.
Yeah, and I could just add a line to, I can just call it, instead of ending in 354, it's going to be 355. And then, so if I understood you correctly, the council grants would go down to 12,000, and then the additional line for the senior center, for 18. I think they'd have to do an agreement or something.
Is that something, since Dale's not here, should we chat with him and Jeff, make sure and check for the DLGF? Make sure we're going to do that?
Yeah, because I think they're going to, I think you'd have to do some type of memorandum of understanding or some, something. Yeah, I, I'll follow up with Dale on that.
Was that the end of the council grants?
It'd be, if I'm understanding correctly, it would be a separate line item. So your grants would go from 30,000 to 12,000.
Okay.
And then you'd have a separate line item for the senior center for 18,000.
I would like that.
So your total will not change any.
Okay.
And Mayor, going back to your budget for your department, do you feel it's adequate?
I'd go within that.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
And I guess I would ask Mac, our other departments that you're overseeing, you think everything's adequate?
Their equipment's very good, and we're doing more or less.
I like the way you phrased what the intents are for some of the employees, giving them other opportunities.
We want them to better themselves.
Ben, our school crossing guards, what is our rate of pay?
30?
It is, it's $15 per, like it's broke up. So it's $30 a day if they do the morning and the afternoon, or $15 per each.
Okay.
And right now, one and a half. And they're all posted. Everywhere else is pretty much buzzing, it seems like.
Why only one, only a half? Why is it one and a half?
One of the crossing guards went to the high school and is doing some job there also. And so he's only available for the after use.
Gotcha, okay. Is that something you think maybe should be higher as far as that rate of pay?
I think it should be on Martinsville School District Police. Now that they have a police department.
I'm sorry, say again?
I think it should be on the Martinsville Police, Martinsville School District Police.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Because they now have a police department.
Right, yes, yeah.
So, I mean, to me, that makes sense. I, I put that out there, the chief has put that out there to them. I don't know that it's coming anywhere besides putting it out there for them.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's something that they should take care of, yeah.
Well, if there are no more questions, I appreciate the permanent coming in and being available to answer any questions. We'll go ahead and take the comments that we received in regards to a couple of these situations. Mac, comment, we'll make adjustments. And then we'll move forward. Again, public hearing is set for September 22nd. The adoption is second reading of the budget of the October 14th. And then Ben will upload it to Gateway then on the 15th or 16th. So everyone, thank you again for coming in. Enjoy this nice warm Saturday.
You too.